Good evening, everybody. I hope if you can't hear at any time from either myself or any board members or anybody on behalf of the applicant, please just raise your hand and let us know, and we'll ask people to speak up. So, Mr. Parry.
Good evening. Edward Parry from [inaudible 00:01:22] representing AT&amp;T. I think last we met on July 25, the outstanding issues from our discussion with the board and their request was to have Dan DuLa, our radio frequency engineer, do an analysis of a potential alternative site at Nile Terrace. So, we had previously run that at the equivalent of 180 feet or 177 feet in ten as a line. The board asked us to take a look to see what would happen if that height were raised to 200 feet, and so we've done that analysis. I'm going to have Dan present his findings to the board with respect to the Nile Terrace site. I guess the only comment to begin with is that the Nile Terrace site is not available to us, so we're talking about a hypothetical site. We did request that Nile Terrace had the potential back in 2009. It was part of our list to the town among 28 other sites, including Wampata School. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dan for his presentation during the meeting, and then both pass questions to Dan.
Thank you.
So, last time we were here, we had looked at Nile Terrace at 180 feet because at the time, they suggested that we could go higher than the [inaudible 00:01:39] that we were looking for. [inaudible 00:01:44] 361 Tilden, that's our [inaudible 00:01:48]. Last time we were here, they asked us, we had run Nile Terrace at 180 feet, as I said, because they told us if we wanted to try the equivalent of the footprint that we began from Tilden, why don't we run the site at Hall? So we ran at Hall, and it still didn't work. So the last hearing, they asked us if we could run it at 200 feet. So we ran the analysis at 200 feet, and I'm going to show you the results.
One, two, three.
This is the footprint of the proposed 361 Tilden at 147 feet. On the right, this is the existing coverage in situ, just showing where the gaps are. That's cellular coverage. Now, this is the Nile Terrace at 177 feet, which is equivalent to 180 foot tall. So what happens with this one is we still have gaps on Havity Road, we get gaps on Garnet, and in areas that we're covering with the proposed site. And the reason for that is, you can see this, the Nile Terrace site is almost a half a mile to the south. So obviously, it's going to, there'll be more coverage to the south, but you notice the site is also closer to the existing site. So these black stars are AT&amp;T's existing site. So this was positioned, Tilden Road, so that it was far enough away from the existing site and in a strategically situated so that we would not get too much redundant coverage, but we would fill in the weak areas and offload the capacity on the existing AT&amp;T network. Now, I'll flip over to, this is Nile Terrace at 200 feet. Now, you look at this and you say, well, this is great. We filled in Havity Road, we still have a gap, a small gap on Garnet. We've got, we've got better coverage in this area, which in a vacuum, and not in an existing network, you say, well, that's, that's a good thing, that looks pretty good. The only problem with this site at 200 feet, which you have to go that height to try to get the footprint, what we were trying to cover with the proposed location because of where this is situated relative to the existing site. The problem is, when you build this at that height, now what you've done is, instead of just offloading, doing normal desired offload of the surrounding sites, you have absorbed practically all of the traffic from this site. When I ran the analysis of POPs, we do what we call POP count. What it does is it looks at, we have POP numbers from 2000 census data, or 2010 now, that tells us where the people are, because we're trying to provide in-building coverage as well as on-street coverage, people driving and commuting. What, what happens here is, the Nile Terrace site at 200 feet, in order to fill in the gaps that we're trying to fill, that we do fill with Tilden Road, now we've taken up 87% of the capacity, the traffic, that was on just this site alone. So now, all you've done is, we, we need this site to fill in gaps and offload the neighboring sites because they can't handle the capacity demand from the users, because everybody wants data streaming and video and fast uploads and fast downloads. But what's happened here is, all we've done is created a new problem. This site, at that approximate height, is going to now cover in the neighborhood of, well, covers over 6,400 POPs, which you don't want that, because now what they'd have, AT&amp;T would have to do, is they'd have to come along and build another site to offload this site. And if we, if we just remove the sector that faces this site, the problem is in doing that, now you have, you've got the gaps that you had before on Beavis Dam and First Parish, you've got them back because this site doesn't reach there. So by going to 200 feet on this theoretical location, you, instead of correcting the problem that they're trying to correct in designing the network, to optimize the network, all they've done is built a new site, taken the problem off of Site A, and moved the whole problem onto Site B. So now what we've got to do is build another site somewhere around this to offload the traffic on that site. That's the problem with the Nile Terrace location.
Board members have their [inaudible 00:01:59] else, or?
Well, I mean, just in comparison, the Tilden Road site offloads 51% of this, which is desirable, because now you've taken, you've left that site with enough traffic, a normal amount of traffic to carry, it's, it's basically spread evenly across Tilden, whereas this site becomes not only lopsided, but, you know, obviously is going to carry too much traffic.
And what's the, what's the criteria for the offload? You, you said it's optimal, but is there a, is there a range?
For me to give you an actual number, but I know that I don't want to take, I don't want to take a site and take 87% of all the traffic and leave the other, the other site with only 23%. That's not a way to design a network. You like in the neighborhood 50%.
Okay. Any questions? Anthony? Okay, any questions from the audience? Starting the [inaudible 00:02:03].
[inaudible 00:02:07]. Where you don't want people moving, switching over to Verizon?
No. Verizon is a different.
Or whatever the other.
It's a different technology. It's not an issue of roaming, it's an issue of providing competitive coverage to the market and providing capacity relief to the existing sites around. AT&amp;T and Verizon don't typically roam on one of them, they don't have roaming [inaudible 00:02:39].
Richard Dillon, 360, Tilden.
At the last meeting, there was a lot of discussion about, appointments made about how, as time goes on, there will continue to be an increase in traffic and demand, and they will then, that will then create further problems down the road, looking for solutions. If you take a longer range view of the solution, doesn't that position you better to absorb that increase as time goes on, five, 10 years out, and be actually advantaged?
Well, AT&amp;T has a current solution, right now for the traffic. What they hold on this market, one, two, three, right, four licenses, which is the old PCS, cellular, and I know they have AWS spectrum, which is 2100. In the early initial meetings, way back when we started in 2009, what I explained was, what they're doing for capacity relief, and I think I may have [inaudible 00:03:11]. They use the cellular network at 800 megahertz as this footprint, we'll, we'll use this for that, they have that footprint. At 1,900 megahertz, the footprint is substantially smaller than this, because 1,900 megahertz doesn't propagate well through trees, buildings, et cetera. So if you shrink this down maybe close to 50%, that's your PCS footprint. The way AT&amp;T is managing their capacity right now is, if you can get on a, [inaudible 00:03:58], that's their PCS network, that's 1,900 megahertz. Notice how big the gaps are. If, if you happen to be here in the green, and you live around here someplace, and you can lock on to their PCS network, you'll lock on to that first, that offloads, but now they're not putting that device, data, whatever you're doing, on the cellular network. But, as you can see here, this, this isn't a viable network, there's too many gaps, so they only use their PCS as an overlay as, for capacity relief. But even with that overlay, there's still a problem in situ. So they went to, they bought AWS spectrum, so now they have a third overlay. And these, these antennas are typically, they're multi-band antennas, it doesn't mean that AT&amp;T is going to put more antennas on every site because they're doing the overlays. What they're typically doing is they're changing out their antennas to newer technology antennas, newer designs that can accommodate both cellular, PCS, and AWS. So now, as the, if you're mobile, and as you move through this area, and you lose your PCS coverage, what happens is you have to go to cellular. So the cellular has a much bigger footprint, if I go back to, if I go back to this, you can see in comparison, that's, that's the cellular coverage. So it has a bigger footprint, but the problem is, you don't want all your customers on the 800. So they, they, to answer your question, they're using three technologies, they're using three different frequency bands that they paid for to handle their capacity issues. But even using those, the problem is that the demand just keeps growing and growing. So their current plan is to, we need a site here anyway for coverage, that's number one. This is, this is the cellular footprint, so the, as I showed you earlier, the PCS footprint is much, much smaller. That's exhibit three, which I think we brought these up [inaudible 00:04:11]. Did I answer your question, one winded, but?
Bill Schmidt, 33, Egypt Beach Road, Town Board, but speaking as a private citizen, I may just say that. Just as a point of clarification, what we're dealing with is coverage here, right, in terms of the FCC law that we need, our AT&amp;T needs to make sure that they provide adequate coverage for their cellular network. So is offloading and optimization of the network, does that have to be part of the equation, given that theoretically, Nile Terrace covers the area adequately, or whatever word we want to use, is that enough for our purposes? Do we need to consider optimization and offloading as well as coverage? My understanding was that as long as they have coverage, then we are satisfying the requirements. Thank you.
Coverage is not signal strength. Just because you have a strong signal, doesn't mean you can communicate. If everybody in this room just all starts yelling, it's a really loud signal, but, and they, they all start talking very loud, saying all different things, just like Tower of Babel. Are you going to understand what they're saying? Is that, is that usable conversation? Is it usable coverage? No, it's, it's just noise. So when the FCC talks about a carrier being allowed to provide service, they're talking, there's a, there's a grade of service built into that. They're talking about providing competitive wireless coverage, that's why every carrier pays so much for the license. Doesn't say, just get out there and just put out a strong signal. If you can't use it, if you go to, if you go to pass data on your laptop over the network, but because it's so noisy, you have ridiculously low speeds, you're going to say, I get this service out, I don't want to be somewhere with somebody else. So it, it isn't just, don't think of signal strength as covered and that the FCC laws only consider a signal level. That is not accurate.
So Maria Horn at 334 Tilden, so Mr. Gulay, could you, yes, Maria Horn at 334 Tilden, Mr. Gulay, could you just explain in simple layman's terms, what is the problem if there's going to be coverage at Nile Terrace in terms of AT&amp;T's plan, in terms of the managing the capacity and the offloading? In other words, what, what service is not going to be there with the 200-foot antenna at Nile Terrace?
What is going to happen with Nile Terrace is, you, yes, you have covered this area, you've provided a level of coverage to it, but now what you've done is, it has totally offloaded this site to the point that this site is underutilized.
And what's the problem with that?
The problem with that is financial. Well, well, I'm sorry, but everybody is in the, would you put, would you allow Dunkin' Donuts to go 20 yards away from another Dunkin' Donuts, or would Dunkin' Donuts do that?
So, Mr. Gulay, could I just paraphrase, it's financial, and so it's a basically?
It isn't just financial.
A business decision?
What happens is, as I explained, you're providing a source of interference. You're building a 200 site, a 200-foot tower when you don't need a 200-foot tower, and you're basically putting it in the wrong location. So what, and you need 200 feet, which is going to be very visible by all the people that live around Nile Terrace. It may not be visible where you are, but it'll be visible to them because it's 50 feet taller than the proposed, and, and what it's doing is just providing a source of interference because the signal's carrying too far. And it's not, the main thing is, it is not solving the network problem.
It sounds like it's creating a new problem.
It's creating a new problem, because you've got the coverage, and now you've got too many users on that site. So what you've done is you've just loaded up that site, and now other people can't get on, and you're actually causing, you're going to end up causing a problem for the users that would have good, good, good quality service around this, they're now going to have, of course, this service is going to degrade.
Luke Tardy, 21, from Midland. One of the, as I understand, one of the major objections is the, the height of the tower and how visible it will be to the neighbors. I know there are other issues involved, but in none of these presentations that I've seen, is there any consideration for the actual elevation of the land upon which the tower will be built? And I say this because Nile Terrace, and I drive down there every day I live in that neighborhood, is probably at sea level because there's tidal flow that comes in and stops at the EPW garage, but that's pretty flat there. So if you build a tower that's 200 feet, you're talking about building it from zero feet sea level. I'm wondering if there is any consideration to taking Man Hill, which is, to the best of my understanding, has an elevation of 50 feet, and choosing sites and maybe a combination of sites, get away with lower towers that would not be as visible and as offensive to, to the neighbors.
To answer your question, the reason, after you've gone elevation on every one of these POPs, and it certainly factors into this, because what this prediction tool does is it takes the terrain, it takes objects on the terrain, houses, trees, marsh, grass, anyway, the Tilden Road site is at a ground elevation of 43 feet, and the Nile Terrace is at 32 feet. So you're not talking a huge difference, but that's why the Nile Terrace was originally, they told us to run it at 180 feet because it was a lower ground elevation.
And have you sought out sites on that hill, on Man Hill?
We, Ed?
Well, we looked at 29 different sites, and this has been going through on a number of occasions, if you take a look at our application, you see the sites that we considered. You have two consultant reports, one by Mr. [inaudible 00:05:25], Mr. Hutchins, and most recent by Mr. [inaudible 00:05:30], which has burned up exactly what we've been saying, and we can keep going around and around and poking at different sites, but we were asked to look at [inaudible 00:05:52] at Nile Terrace, which we did. I'm not sure we can construct a tower at Nile Terrace, so it's a hypothetical that we're accommodating to let you know what coverage will be like. There are significant wetlands, we have not spent resources to decide, is this a site that can be constructed, will be conservation, commission issues, which may or may not be resolvable, and the site's not available. The town has yet to offer an RFP for that site now. I will say, the town did listen and respond to our request for an RFP at Wampata. We'll talk a little bit later about the correspondence I said yesterday, but they know how to make a site available. Now, we're talking about shifting neighborhoods. If I'm in Tilden, I'm saying, yeah, go, let's pick any spot up there, as long as it's not in my neighborhood. The screening, you've seen the photo simulations with respect to the screening, there are not a lot of 200-foot towers getting constructed these days, so it will be visible on Nile Terrace, if it were ever available, and if we could build it. AT&amp;T's position is that it does not fit within AT&amp;T's network, not Verizon's network, not Sprint's, AT&amp;T's. If Nile Terrace was the one that we had to build, we're going to be looking for another site eventually, because it makes 12 of the one at the high school pointless for us. So you'll end up with 200-foot tower there, and then something else large to fill in the gaps that will, that Dan suggested will open up.
My question is, if you look back to the map that shows 170-foot tower at Nile's Terrace, what is the percentage of coverage from that specific type of tower at Nile's Terrace versus the proposed Tilden Road, and what is the difference in gaps that we're seeing there?
The gaps are all, they're all in the report that we've provided, and that two consultants have concurred with. The gaps are shown on Garnet, on Hollit, on Tully Way, on Havity, and we have more gap, we cover a lot less POPs over here in this area that we're trying to fill in at 177 feet. So why, why would you build a site that, if you have a site that fills in what you're trying to fill in, or at least 90% of it, even the site that we have, it, it's not 100%, but it doesn't, it covers all of these gaps that I just mentioned, that this site at 177 does not cover.
But that does cover some gaps, that.
Yeah, it covers some.
And what's the difference in percentage, like, is it 50% more coverage?
Oh, you want, you want the actual numbers?
Yes.
The problem is, you can't, I can give you actual numbers, but what that's going to give you is what, what Nile Terrace is covering at 177 feet, part of which is already covered by the site at the high school. So when I give you the numbers, at 177 feet, it's covering a total of 5,400 POPs, all right? The proposed site is covering 5,040, which sounds, what, it's a lower number mathematically, but the thing is, out of the 5,400, some of those 5,400 are already covered by 1204, they're not new POPs.
All right, all right. No shouting out, I'm telling you, not going to happen. If you got a question, raise your hand.
And even at 177 feet, what happens is the Nile Terrace site offloads 72% of that high school site, whereas the proposed site offloads 55%, which is what we want to do. We don't, we don't want to move the traffic and create a new problem, we want to fix the problem.
Any other questions?
Nicole Young, 35, Tilden Road, so you said, why would AT&amp;T put that site there instead of a Tilden Road? Well, a huge thing would be for the, for the neighbors surrounding that area, so that you're not upsetting all of these people, when you could put it in a different location, that would be further away from other houses. We're not saying, like he said, to put it into any neighborhood. This place is much further away from other houses, instead of putting it right in our backyard, it's ridiculous.
Yes, you say, 45, Egypt Beach Road. I have a question that goes back to the board and to AT&amp;T, that I think we're focusing on these specific areas, however, it's going back to the question of allowing zoning for a private landowner, and as AT&amp;T just said a few minutes ago, that where there isn't coverage, they are going to go and put another tower. So I think the board has to be really aware of that no matter what gets approved or doesn't get approved, that what's going to happen going down to Comrock, and that you're going to keep having these problems come up unless it's solved this very first time. And you're not going to have any way to fight AT&amp;T putting something up in somebody's backyard in the harbor, because this one's already been approved. So I think, I know that we're arguing over Nile Terrace and Tilden Road and Wampata School, but I think the bigger picture has to be looked at just a little bit. And then, is there a way that we can take a look at the FCC law again and see exactly what the word "coverage" means in that 1996 law, and what it means, and whether it really does define anything about offloading or not offloading, or if that's something that you even have to be concerned about, or if you're just concerned about coverage?
This won't be the POPs, but Tilden is available, Tilden is ready to go, it's a permanent issue. So we're here to try to exhaust the alternative, so I think we've done, I think AT&amp;T has gone out of its way to present, we've presented over 30 alternative locations, that we looked at. That doesn't typically happen, it's usually, well, it's obvious this might work, that might work. We've been asking select, and we give it one more look at Wampata if they so choose, and hopefully they will. We think that. We think that is a winning situation for the neighbors on Tilden. We understand it's going in somebody's backyard. This is, you know, the backyard of the smalls, and it's a 150-foot tower. We understand that. The thing is, it's available to us. None of these other sites are available to us, or they don't work. We have a significant gap in coverage. We've had maybe the premier consultant agree with us in bulk of all of our tests. We're not making it up. Your second consultant verified that. We have a significant gap. We need to fill it. Tilden's available. We don't have options that are available. We can talk about something that might occur six months from now, eight months from now. We've been working with the town for years to try to solve the issue. And we're, we're at a point, now rather than force a decision and, you know, we ask the elected officials one more time to give us one more look, which I'll, you know, take up in the letter that I sent on Monday. But at some point, this has to end. We can pick other neighborhoods to send it in, but I don't know what the neighborhoods are like on Nile Terrace, but 200 feet is going to be a big tower. We've, we've put the tower on Tilden. I know it's not popular. We put the tower on Tilden, it's in a lot of vegetation, there's a lot of screening. It's going to be visible. It's going to be visible anywhere we put it consistently. We think we have another alternative that works at the Wampanoag School. The elected official said, well, you know, we're really not comfortable with that. Failed 2 to 2. Maybe that's a pretty close call, could go either way. The bottom line is, Tilden's available, Nile's is not, Wampanoag is not. The other 28 that we look at either don't work or are not available. So we can talk about hypothetical sites, but at the end of the day, pursuant to the 96 Act, they're not available.
Is this a good point? Do you want to talk about the Wampanoag?
I'd be happy, I'd be happy to. We can, I know that my colleague has some information on Nile Terrace, but I'm happy to deal with my letter to the Board of Selectmen on Monday, if that's what you choose.
Well, I'm kind of curious on where you're going with it, that's for sure. I mean...
Yeah, well, during part of the, we get contacted an awful lot. You know, via email, the comments made before. I understand that we attract 30, 40, 50 people a year over Tilden, and it is a delegated residential neighborhood. Some of the comments that we've heard from various folks in the town are that part of the problem with Wampanoag was the location. And I think at our first hearing, there was some significant discussion about how that came to be, and the former chairman at the time asked me, you know, how we ended up at the location of Wampanoag that was made pursuant to the RFP. I stated at that time, we did not choose the location. That was by town design. I don't know why they chose that. They decided on the issue of the RFP that this is where it was going to go. So in, given some thought, how can we strike a balance here? I watched the video of the Board of Selectmen meeting, which was held back in big March of 2013. And I think there was some confusion over why the tower was where it was going to go. There was some concerns about the tower being located near play areas, near the school. And I don't say that I'm an expert on the Wampanoag School site, but I went back to the application that we filed for the Wampanoag School to take a look at what the site plan actually looks like. You know, the tower was positioned way over towards a paper street called Eagle Street. I know, I see there are a lot of play areas, some playgrounds. And one thing that dawned on us after, again, rewatching the testimony of the public meeting of the Board of Selectmen, was a concern about the location of the tower. And we don't want to leave any stone unturned. I think we've done our due diligence responding to the board's questions, to the neighbors' questions. These analyses, you know, have a cost to them, they have a timing cost to them, but we understand that what we're doing is a residential district. So I went and looked at the Tilden Road, on the Wampanoag School property, and realized possibly the Board of Selectmen voted 2 to 2 not to send the town meeting because they didn't like the location. It wasn't clear to me what the real problem was. There was some opposition, no question. But it's a close call, and so I talked to AT&amp;T about what, you know, we should attempt to do. There is this, is there a possibility of reapproaching the town to Wampanoag, but suggesting a different location of the school property? So there's something called the proven ground, the land of cool stuff, which applies to property. So in poking around, it sounds like that property that may not be developed in the near future, or possibly ever, it's to the rear of the Wampanoag School site. So AT&amp;T decided to reach out to the town one more time. We think Wampanoag is a solution that absolves the, or resolves the coverage issue, as we've previously mentioned. It, from our perspective, takes away the use of someone's backyard on Tilden. It presents an opportunity for the town to derive revenue, all of the things that we've been hearing through this process, which are all valid. And maybe the selectmen would have a different take on it if they used a different portion of the site. Again, we didn't dictate where. So the question was, let's give it one more try. So I sent a letter on Monday, which I have copies up here. It was emailed to Nicole, so I assume it happened. If you don't, I have copies. And it basically asked the Board of Selectmen to reconsider their vote not to send it to town meeting, and to issue another RFP. It doesn't mean AT&amp;T is going to be the winner, as I said, you know, one of our competitors actually outbid us last time. But to sort of took the nail in the coffin before we get down the road that maybe all of us will regret someday, being the Tilden Road folks, you know, expense to the town, expense to AT&amp;T, having, you know, leaving a bad taste with the neighbors in Tilden, if in fact we end up giving the power over significant opposition. We think that the screening on Wampanoag makes a lot of sense. I'm also very much aware of issues that folks have with locating a site at a school. I don't think they're founded. I don't think they are appropriate. On the other hand, I completely understand why people would raise those concerns. If the Board of Selectmen have the political will to decide to do that, AT&amp;T is prepared to move forward with that proposal, let it run through its process, if they'll issue an RFP, send town meeting, and let the chips fall where they may on Wampanoag. If they choose not to, then I think we're going to ask this board for a decision.
So...
I think that's, you know, very fair, and I think that's AT&amp;T going out of its way to accommodate all of the state owner interests. So that's what we've asked the Board of Selectmen to do.
And I noticed that's where they're meeting a week from now.
Yeah, they're meeting, I'm told they're meeting now, again, I don't have a direct conversation with them. I went and checked the website. It appears they're meeting on August 20th, which sort of fits in. I don't know, one meeting satisfactory? We just need to know from them, and I think it's best on to the public forum, are you interested in revisiting this issue? And if they are, AT&amp;T stands ready to continue this for a period of time, to make sure that process continues moving in a favorable direction towards, you know, use in this area. And if that's the case, we will grant extensions to both the state law mandatory decision filing and the shot clock. And that's what we represented to the selectmen yesterday. I do have an agreement here, if that's mentally fit for, that we would execute and continue this hearing to sometime, I think sometime in September would work, because I anticipate it would either be decided on the 20th or shortly thereafter. And we will push these statutory decision date out 30 days to October, so that it gives some time if we have to come back and forth, have a hearing, get a decision, then you have that for time to render a decision.
Do you think it makes sense to leave the hearing open, or close, or close your portion? Take, or close the evidence?
Well, I don't, I don't think we can close the hearing, because once you close it, we then can't bring whatever resolution there is to Wampanoag into this hearing.
Yeah.
So I would ask that the hearing be left open. We can, the board can decide what it needs to hear again and not hear again. So I, we have not suggested we've been treated unfairly. I think the proceedings have been very fair, you know, each time I've been before this board. So I have no qualms that it's not going to be a lot of repetition. I think, you know, dialogue and discussion is good, and I think that's what spurred AT&amp;T to take a look at this one last time before forcing wall hands. And I think that's really the effort here. So I guess my preference, if I had one, our evidence is pretty much done. I know that, you know, my colleague has some issues to present, which I have, you know, which is fine. I guess I would like to get it to the point where we're sort of done with everything. We'll leave it open. If the selectmen say no, I anticipate I'll be back the next hearing saying, we really like our decision, you know, we have to, I chose October 17th, assuming that you were meeting on Thursday. So I anticipate, you know, requesting a continuance to sometime in September, and maybe we try to get two Board of Selectment meetings through, you know, in case, I know there'll be opposition to the Wampanoag site, there was last time, I would anticipate there will be again.
This is a small crowd, compared to Wampanoag.
Well, they're great. We're not just inviting neighbors to Wampanoag, we're inviting the student body and parents to Wampanoag. So, you know, we understand that. We understand the realities and the political realities of using elementary school. On the other hand, it just makes tremendous sense. And if we can keep it far enough from the areas, if that was the concern, I think the selectmen will acknowledge that, and maybe we can strike a balance. And if not, there's no harm done. This 30 days of time, we'll come back, ask the board for a rendered decision, and then we anticipate that'll happen not til...
Okay, look to me, and looking at your, your diagram, you're, you're around 200 feet from the school, or the play area.
Well, if you, if you look at our site plan, the tower was going to go far enough away from the school, but there were play areas.
Yeah.
A whole thing to the players.
Okay. Nope, nope, nope. I'm not, no, I'm sorry, you haven't been called on, you'll get an opportunity. Please, go ahead.
Yeah, it's not my decision whether it gets, you know, decided to use Wampanoag or not, it's, it's the Board of Selectmen. And when it fails 2 to 2, and we look at everything surrounding, it seems to me it makes sense to do one last effort. And if they don't want to do it, I mean, on the 20th, if they say no, or if they respond to the letter next week and say we're not interested in doing anything, you know, fine. We feel like we've done our due diligence. We'll report back, I'm sure they will to the board. And we would ask that the hearing be, you know, closed in September. I'll do my closing, and we'll ask for the decision to be issued, you know, pursuant to the shot clock on, by October 17th.
Okay. Any comments, Frank?
Just a question. Say, say the Board of Selectmen is interested in Wampanoag, and we go down that route, do we, we have to start this all over again?
No. I mean, what I would, what I would propose doing is that we would, we would agree on continuances, but there'll be timing, so that we can see that things are moving forward. But it's not going to be where it has to roll every month. And RFP is very easy to issue, you know, it's, you know, it's already been written, they just, they just need to eliminate the locates. So, you know, if we need, there's a process that that needs to follow, that could be anywhere from 60 to 90 days, and we understand that. If they say yes, that we'll entertain the RFP, then we would grant it, or we would request an appropriate continuance, say for 90 days for this board. So that the hearing would go out to the end of the year at some point. And as long as things continue to move forward, then we would continue to grant those continuances so that the town has to keep moving forward.
Right.
So that we're not spinning our wheels. We don't want to have to reapply. The point would be, if the town says, no, we're not going to do it again, then we would ask this board for a decision. So our, our lever point is this application, so that the town continues to move forward.
I get that part.
And we would, if, if in fact it worked out, we would draw this move.
And, but, so then, if we go down the Wampanoag road, my question then is, do we have to start again to give the Wampanoag area people to fight the whole coverage discussion that we've just had, and go through all that again? Okay.
Yeah, which we did in 2011.
I understand, it'll be, so it'll be a third time.
It wouldn't.
Who was the, who was the RFP expert that was so good the last time? Was that your expert, or is that the gentleman that unfortunately is deceased?
The radio frequency expert?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was Mark Hutchins. He passed.
Yeah. He was so good. He, I think he really explained the, the health and safety issues.
Oh, you might be talking about, Don, Mr. Dr. Hayes came in also to talk about the emissions, now that he is around and available. We met with, we did meet with the PTA at the school, because that got, you know, we actually applied for zoning relief on that site, and we'll bring them back, I'm sure there'll be a bigger crowd this time, but Dr. Hayes could certainly come in to address the, the emissions and the health concerns.
I think that was who it was. Yeah. He was excellent.
It's Dr. Hayes.
Okay, good. Any kind of questions?
It just seems, just kind of getting back to two things. One was the Nile Terrace, your kind of standpoint is, well, one, it's not available to you guys, and two, that the location of the tower on there isn't going to give you the competitive coverage that you're looking for, that Tilden Road would give you.
Correct.
And then so, in that, there you're waiting to hear from the selectmen on 20th to see what direction to go, if there is a second option as opposed to the 361 Tilden Road.
Yeah, I, I mean, our testimony throughout this process in the last couple of times is that the Wampanoag School gets close to what 361 Tilden does, it's acceptable for the AT&amp;T network. If they make Wampanoag available, we would go for it and drop Tilden. If they make Nile's Terrace available, it's not something that AT&amp;T has an interest in as far as its network is concerned, for the reasons Dan stated. In addition to some of the site-specific issues that we have, we know that we can use Wampanoag, we know we can use Tilden.
Anthony?
No, I think that, nothing really further specific. I think that the board needs to be careful that, you know, as we go through the Wampanoag analysis and the continuances, you alluded to, not starting again. I think to a certain extent, we're getting dangerously close to starting again each time we're meeting here. There were certain questions that seemed to be answered, and we're asking questions again, which is understandable, but especially where we switch focus. I think we all have to be careful to keep putting one foot in front of the other, and not, not lose sight of what we've already addressed here.
I can tell you, the concern on Wampanoag is going to be the emissions concern. And as we did last time, if the town decides they will go forward, we will do a presentation that is not before the zoning board, and it's completely to the school population, through the superintendent's office. We'll go in and we'll have somebody answer questions for as long as they want about health and the emissions. Now, not something that this board can at least consider in this decision, but they're legitimate questions, and we will, we will answer them, and we will get the answer for anybody for as long as it takes. And it doesn't have to be in this forum, we did the same the last time, we will do it the same.
All right, I will, I'll take a few more questions, ma'am.
Thank you. When you chrome 70 and 70 Road, so the first thing I want to properly represent is the objections from the Wampanoag, the reflect.
Okay.
You know what? And I don't mean to cut anybody off, but I think it's important to realize, we're not, we're not here talking about Wampanoag. They're just simply, that's a whole...
Whole other, you know...
I understand that, but it's your decision tonight on whether or not to get it back over to the selectmen is important. Do you want to continue this? Are you going to decide on these two locations? Or are you going to say, okay, we're going to hold off the way to get to the selectmen?
Well, you know, I, I mean, I think the board's going to have to decide that, but the applicant, it's the applicant, it's the applicant wants to continue and present another location, which has always been from way back. Wasn't that your first location always?
Wampanoag has always been our...
Where and going is...
Oh, excuse me. Let's finish.
Wampanoag has always been, Wampanoag has always been our second preference.
Second.
Our first preference is 361 Tilden. There aren't two alternatives tonight, we're talking about 361 Tilden.
Correct.
So I'm not offering another alternative.
Correct.
I'm suggesting that we are willing to go back to the town to discuss that. If they tell us no, then we'll be back, and this will be over, and we'll ask for a decision. It will be done.
So this will be the third time that we will go back to the Wampanoag site. And we, as parents, with children at that site, will once again have to go through this process of, and you can have your experts talk about the emissions. I understand that. AT&amp;T can before have anybody write any report. I read the BioInitiative report. I know that there has not been one study done on the effects of those emissions on children, not one. So if you... So, if you show me a report of a child, a five-year-old child, and then emissions five days a week for the school year, then I can listen.
Okay. Ma'am?
Within 500 feet, those emissions are dangerous. Not only the playground, the whole campus is the playground. So, those children, if that thing falls down, those children are playing in that playground, that's a safety concern as well. Or if there's a fire.
Okay. Thank you. Sir?
Yes, Mike Segreski, 15 Linden Avenue. I just want to say that, you know, I understand the difficulties in this decision, but this has been going on for some time, and I think, you know, the longer it goes on, the more difficult it becomes for me to understand. I mean, we're talking about an essential service these days, a service that many people depend on for life-saving. And I'd really like to encourage that we move forward with whatever decision it is, quickly, and put it behind us. We manage to come to terms with an overhead power system in this town, we come to terms with a windmill. I don't understand why we can't come to terms with locker cell coverage, to be able to adequately support the town's needs now and going forward in the future.
Thank you.
So, these are difficult decisions that we're making. And if you... If the board wants to choose to go ahead with the Tilden Road site, I ask that we put a condition on the lease for the Smalls' land, that perhaps maybe the most affected residents, somehow a new lease could get worked out, so that the most affected residents get some...
Not the decision.
Compensation, as well as the Smalls'. So, it's not just the Smalls' who are getting a compensation from having this tower in their yard, but the surrounding residents also. I'm sure some way it could be worked into a lease legally.
I think that is absolutely beyond any stretch.
...that we can control at all. That would have to be between the Butters and AT&amp;T, I suppose, but not... It's not within... It's not within our ability to condition a permit, a cell phone tower permit, that the Butters get, you know, compensated. It just is not something we can do. As much as we might, you know, might make sense, or be nice, certainly for the Butters, but I don't believe that is anything we can even talk about.
I find it hard, please, because I know other town governments, or other town offices and stuff, when they make their decisions, they do it based upon contingencies, based upon, like, things getting before, like, orders of condition.
We can certainly make orders of conditions, but not to give a Butters compensation that is just absolutely without any doubt, nothing we can even consider. It's just, I'm sorry, you know, but I have to tell you straight out, it's just nothing that this board can do.
Is there a word that could...
No.
Or could AT&amp;T propose that?
It's just if somebody will leave letters at AT&amp;T, or... I don't know how you would get it done.
Root Avenue 21, Pyramid Lane. I printed out the report from the consultant that was the presenter last meeting. As I read this, there are other alternatives to providing coverage to the area that's in question. It may involve multiple sites, it may involve increasing the size of the fire station to provide more coverage in the barber area, and possibly a smaller tower in the Egypt area somewhere. But again, I go back to the issue that I hear most people complaining about, is the obtrusiveness of the size of the tower. And if some compromise can be made so that the, you know, we have bigger towers in existing locations, or changing the size of one tower, and putting smaller satellite towers in different locations to meet AT&amp;T's goal, that is something that should be looked at. And quite honestly, as a board, I think we have to take that into consideration, that there are alternatives available, at least according to this consultant, to solve the problem, and that this singular, not singular like the cell phone... This unique situation that they're proposing may not be the best alternative for the citizens of Situ.
Janitor, 30 and 70 Road. I have a question about this compound on the ground, where you're talking about a setback of 80 feet from a Butters' property. Is this compound also going to be 80 feet from a Butters' property, or is this going to be right up against a stone wall on both the needs property and our property? And how exactly, how close would it be? This also involves, by the way, according to the sound study, an 11-foot building construction in order to provide the sound protection that this stuff is going to need.
Now, my question is about the fencing that goes around it. The one on Highland Crossing has barbed wire around the top?
Let's go ahead and answer it, please. Before he forgets it, or I forget it.
The tower is 80... I'm not sure if you can tell me, I need to the south of which... Which lot are you looking at?
Route 97, yeah.
I don't have that, this is... What's the... So, the power is 80 feet from your property line.
And if the tower falls, who owns that tower?
Well, as I've said in our evidence, the power is designed not to fail, and it's designed... Okay, I can fit it. I'll finish if you want, or you can help me stop. The power is designed not to fail, and it's built for some capability. So, just like your streetlights on Route 93, they can fall over too, but they're designed not to fail.
The question really is, that compound, how close is it?
Compound would be... The fence itself? I'm going to have to do it approximately, it's probably about 40 feet. Well, if you take a look at the compound, which is... The fall is 35 feet from the fence, and it's 80 feet from your property line, so it's 45 feet of your property. You can get that by looking at sheet C3, and the second. So, the fence is about 45 feet from your property.
And is that part of the company behind it as well?
I don't... That's probably your property. That'd be 34-31-31C. Let's say it'd be approximately the same. Which fits within the setback. So, the whole center is in the compound, the fence surrounds the tower. The tower's 80 feet from your property line, and 80 feet from the property line.
So, you're trying to...
The tower's 150, and that is a free piece on the top of the structure, which is 50. I know we're going to be...
I thought you said that. I'm sorry.
We have proposed an H book called Chamberlain Fence. I do not see barbed wire on it, I usually notice those things. But I think would be sound issues that would go against wood fence, so that we could put baffling behind the fence, so that we comply with the...
The structures within that, whether stampings were proposed, stamp studies say 11 feet.
Right, fence will have to be 11 feet, will have a baffle behind it, so it's a stock or a wooden fence that has no brace, so it'll be a baffle put behind it. And that is to accommodate all of the potential installations. AT&amp;T is the only installation on it, it has two H actives, and that's what makes the noise.
But there are four others, each of those will have a H act, and they're as well making additional noise. I think we must go to monitor the noise.
Well, you know, you have enforcement provision in town, you're describing noise. As I said, as I said, at each of the hearings, the power is designed to attack areas, not all of the listed areas in Centwood. And for fact, street uses outside cabinets, whether they continue doing that, I don't know. So, when that comes before this board, that's what this board gets to decide, does it come off?
My question would be, it tells me the town has to monitor this?
Okay. You know, it's not really a dialogue, all right? There's questions that could be answered, but...
The question is, does the town have to monitor this?
Like, the town monitors any privilege. If you have a problem with noise, that's on your name, and you have a problem with me and with noise, you call the town's zoning enforcement officer, the building official, and say, "This guy's making too much noise. If I'm not violating the noise requirement, I'm not violating. If I am, then the town issues citations." That's the way it works. Somebody's acting out of line, you call the police. If the building is not being accommodated properly, or not being run properly, you call the police, sorry.
There you go. And, you know, rest assured that we paid great attention to that sound study, and now you're talking order conditions. That would be appropriate for order conditions, to make sure that, you know, that they comply to the, you know, with all the sound studies that, to keep the noise down. We're not unaware of the issue. Ma'am?
Hi, Robin Glaser, 26 Pennsylvania Avenue. I had... I'm still a little worried about a couple of things. When we're talking about the compound, now, is my understanding that, you know, say somebody comes in later, rising, or whatever, that 55 by 60, that 56 feet, would then expand to accommodate them, or can someone add their equipment within that? Because I'm wondering, okay, if it's 40 feet from my property line now, and then, say, somebody comes in and they co-locate, which is expected, does that 55 by 60 thing have to expand, or does that leave enough room for co-locators to go ahead inside that?
That's my understanding.
At least after...
This is the size.
Okay.
And if they want to increase it, they got to come back here.
Okay. So, the other thing that keeps worrying me, and I know that the things are designed to collapse halfway before they fall. We know that there are examples of that not happening. So, I know, like, when our neighbors treaty came down on our property, you know, we were responsible for cleaning that up, fine. But if the tower falls lengthwise, so 150 feet onto the property of the neighbors, and it falls like Welsley did, it didn't collapse, it fell, who is responsible for the cleanup of that? Who pays for that?
AT&amp;T.
So, you guys would cover the cost of...
We own the... AT&amp;T owns the tower, it's responsible for its towers.
Okay, and it's not the lease... It's not the Smalls', for instance, who would have to come up with that money? Because I just feel like, you know, when you're getting into... My worry is based on, when you're getting into a, you know, an individual... Like, I know I wouldn't have money to spend to clean up an industrial cell tower if I were leasing my property to somebody.
How many people probably do.
You know, and so, like, where I would think that the town, if it were town-owned property, they'd be able to handle that. If it's an individual who's leasing their property to somebody, is it the leasing individuals' ultimate legal responsibility to clean it up? Or is it AT&amp;T's responsibility to clean that up?
AT&amp;T would certainly be a responsible party. I'm sure that everyone and their brother would be sued over it, just like if you leased a car. If you don't have deep pockets, I'm going to go after whatever car company you rented it from. So, everyone will be dragged into it. But it's AT&amp;T's property, they'll be responsible for it. They designed them, they have engineers that design them.
I'm sure they're insured.
And I'm sure. There's self-insurance, but I'm sure that there are tons of reinsurance.
Sir?
Yeah, Jonathan Reed, 331 Tilden. What would be the setback at Nile Terrace?
I'm sorry, what was that?
What would be the setback at Nile Terrace from the closest property line?
Well, we don't know. We don't know where we could build a Nile Terrace facility. There are significant wetlands. I'm not going to get into a discussion about what we can engineer and what we can't. Nile Terrace has significant issues. Not only doesn't it fit within AT&amp;T's network, if you just look at the GIS maps of the town, you'll see that there are significant wetlands. We would have to go and get an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. I think we'd have trouble convincing them that there are no alternatives, where we wouldn't have to disturb wetlands, because they will be aware of Tilden. So, if we filed an application, if we could get in there and actually do the site, that's one thing. But if you just take a look at the extent of the wetlands, we're dealing with general location when it comes to Nile Terrace, because we don't know that we could even engineer a tower to go on Nile Terrace. So, it's hard to say how far we would be back. It may have to be up against the property line, I don't know. Nobody knows.
My name is Bob Kyrosen for Kyros Circle. This is my third meeting where I've raised the issue, and I applaud the AT&amp;T option, but I think there are other options. And it was mentioned that there were over 30 sites considered for this particular tower. And, you know, I'm speaking from a lack of knowledge, but I'd love to know how many of those sites were town-owned. And I keep raising the issue, the operative word in my world is strategic. What's the strategic plan for Situette to figure out where the best coverage will be? My logic would be that if we did the study, let's find out where we could put towers, plural, and figure life out from there, as opposed to just looking at a Band-Aid approach with one tower in one neighborhood. The second part of this is that I would rather see it on town land, so that the town can reap the benefits, the financial benefits. I certainly applaud AT&amp;T's altruistic approach to all of this, but I think the town can benefit financially, especially when you consider multiple towers. It just means more money to put AT&amp;T in the lead position in developing these towers. And I think all of their so-called competitors would be pleased to piggyback on to their towers, in a sense, and guide them with financial gain. So, I see the strategic approach as being much more global, from the town standpoint, from the service standpoint, and obviously from the financial side. So, again, I ask the board, and I'm... If you would put this on hold and consider developing a strategic plan.
And I think, good points.
And again, well thought out, but the reality of it is, we have to... We're not the town planners to decide where cell towers are going to go. I don't... I don't know. I'm, you know, the first persons I would put it in front of is the selectmen, and I'm not sure that, you know, what the response would be. But we have an application to deal with, and that's all we get to do. We are very limited in what we can do. We either say yes or no, but if the selectmen, you know, to approach the selectmen in thinking more globally, I'm not sure, you know, what their response to be. But I think it's a good question to put in front of them.
Is that the procedure? We should now go to the selectmen?
I don't know the procedure. I'm just saying, that's just a question I would ask them. I don't know. I just know it's not our board. We don't get to do a master plan for cell towers in Situette. It's just not... It's not our responsibility, it's not even... It's not our power to do that. We just have to decide the application in front of us.
I understand. So, I hate to say that you should negate the present proposal, but you'd be negating using a strong, stronger argument, saying we'd like to consider something more global. And that's where, you know, I'm troubled, because you're not telling me the procedure in which we can go down in any way, shape, or form. So, that leaves me to figure life out by myself, or as a group, and I'm not necessarily sure that we have the horsepower to do that within a reasonable period of time.
You've got a lot more horsepower than we do, you know? And you've got... You've got one group, I'm not sure who...
but you'd be negating using a strong, stronger argument, saying we'd like to consider something more global. And that's where, you know, I, I'm troubled, because you're not telling me the procedure in which we can go down in any way, shape, or form. So that leaves me to figure life out by myself, and I'm not, or as a group, and I'm not necessarily sure that we have the horsepower to, to do that within a reasonable period of time.
You've got a lot more horsepower than we do, you know? And you've got, you've got one group, I'm not sure who, who Attorney Serke represents, but you've got very good counsel there, and, and I see his hand up, so perhaps you have a question, a response to that.
Well, I wanted to know when I would be able to make my presentation.
When, when we sort of get questions answered? You have a, like, a more formal presentation you'd like to make tonight?
I'll need about fifteen or twenty minutes, but I want to wait until that presentation's through, but I just want to make sure this time through.
You know, I cut you kind of short last week. I'm going to make sure you get all the time you need tonight, up to, like, ten o'clock. And that gives you an hour and a half, so I think that, I think we'll be good. Let's get any more questions.
Hey, it's a forty-five, eighty-two. I think that when our booth doing all the research that we did, we looked and spoke a lot to the people from Welsley, and it seems that all their boards interact and talk to each other. And I beg to differ with you, that this is a Situate issue, and it's not just solely this board. You have a little bit more of an obligation to, one, yes, answer what Mr. Parry wants, and, and thank you for offering up our school again. But I think you have a bigger obligation, because this is a, a town planning issue, that to bring it up and have the boards come together and have a discussion together about something like this, and not keep operating in a vacuum, and make it up to us to go to the selectmen, to go to each individual group, or the town planner.
Well, let me just say something. If, if I give you an impression, we didn't, we haven't interacted with the other town boards, that's not, that's not true. The application gets submitted to the other town boards, and they have an opportunity to submit comments, okay? And we have had comments from them, I don't have them organized in front of me, but we've heard from a number of the town boards that have made comments. And I know they're part of the record, and so it's not that it's, we solicit those comments from them, but you're talking, I understood that was being talked about, something a little bit different, more of a master plan. Situate has a master plan. It's a book, you can get it, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a bound volume that you can pick up. And, yeah, I don't, you know, I don't know if something like a cellphone tower master plan can be created. I, I think that's a little, it's kind of, I, you know, I'm not saying it's, it's not something to talk about or think about, but you're not talking about, the, the town would have to, I guess, then decide where they'd want to put RFPs out or something.
You know, to be, to be fair to this board...
Thank you.
You know, they have to, they have to deal with what's in front of them, to an extent, but since two thousand nine, the town has an overlay district. It was created back in, I think, oh seven or early...
No, early.
We've been advising it, it's not adequate. The, the overlay district where they want the tower put in will not provide coverage. That's why we're here, that's why we're here now. So, somebody asked me how many town properties, there are a ton of town properties out of the town, I have thirty-one we've looked at, some don't work for us, but we went to the town and said, "Listen, this is a revenue potential. Here are a bunch of sites in our area of Tilden where we may be able to provide the adequate coverage, but we've been telling them, your overlay district doesn't work, even if you chose lots so that nobody would be bothered by it. Bottom line is, these facilities are coming where the people are, and they're coming into residential areas. So could you come up with a plan? Yes, if you take the planning board, you bought a selectman to decide where towers should go, but the overlay that has been laid out so far is entirely inadequate, and you had two consult, we had two consultants that were hired, hired, say that exact thing, if the overlay district doesn't work, which is why we have such a complicated application. It could easily be done where certain zones, certain areas, but it takes planning, and it takes effort, and it takes the willingness of someone to say, yes, it's okay to go here. Because it's all done in very open, transparent fashion, through the planning board, and the selectman.
Ma'am.
I think all the points about the strategic planning and Nancy Faes' points are really good, and I would pose them to AT&T. I think we've had some disingenuous information coming out of AT&T, saying that AT&T has gone out of its way. I just don't see that AT&T has gone out of its way, and I think there's some misinformation in terms of saying that the town rejected those twenty-eight or thirty sites. That the town sent, as I understand, that the building inspector sent a letter to AT&T saying that those sites were out of the overlay district, but at that time, they hadn't gotten the legal opinion, so then, once they got the legal opinion, saying that they couldn't, you know, that, that it wasn't permissible to say, because they're out of the site, out of the overlay site, that, that those sites would not be available. So I don't think there's been actual rejection from the town on those twenty-eight sites. And moreover, the point about the multiple sites, I think, was very good, and there's just a lot of other ways that the antennas can be put up. I've lived in northern Virginia, and it's a very urban area. Frankly, I've never seen one of these in a backyard. What they do is, they put them inside flagpoles, they put them inside poles that are, for example, I've seen one on a one-story, uh, commercial building within a residential district. I know Fairfax County has now doing one that's going to be inside of a clock tower. So there's all kinds of things. We also found examples of antennas on an island that are inside of the mass of dry dock sailboats. So I think when AT&T is saying that it's, it's just gone out of its way, I don't see that at all. I mean, there's just, I think, a lot of other options that haven't been really looked at, and so in terms of strategic or global thinking, I would ask AT&T to do some more of that, and come with some kind of plan, you know, that would just be much more palatable, especially since AT&T has indicated they're going to need to go up the coast. So, you know, I'm, I'm at a loss why AT&T is, is even proposing this in a backyard, and, and why, you know, how it would at all be financially beneficial to them to, to string this out. Why don't they just come up with something that, some smaller antennas, not, I understand the issue on DAS, but just something that is smaller, that is more palatable to everyone.
Just a, one comment on that, that they have, going back to two thousand and ten, two thousand and nine, there were several sites that, they weren't all town-owned sites they had looked at, a lot of the owners were contacted, some of them weren't interested, so they did get some feedback that way, as to the other sites they were looking at in town. So they, they have been looking at other sites, they did approach us with other sites, even prior to this meeting, as far as availability and whatnot, so...
But the town sites specifically, the town has not rejected all of those sites?
Not, not all those sites were town sites. Some of the, some of the sites that, some of the sites were rejected, not just because they were town property or the town had that opportunity. I think some of the sites were also rejected because they didn't do what AT&T needed them to do. So that would be the, the other part of the equation, as well as some of the sites that they, they looked at and didn't fit, fit with them. And then also, in addition to that, some of the private, other private sites that they looked at, that just weren't available to them. And again, this is just going back from a few other...
Right, I do, two years ago, yeah.
Yeah, well, it's the same, a lot of the same locations have been looked at and, you know, studied, so...
You know, the town, the town controls the process. The town controls whether it issues an RFP. If the town wanted to issue an RFP on any particular site, it could do so. And we've been at this since oh-nine, so it's not stale. It could have, that the, any number of town-owned sites could have been issued, they could have issued an RFP on them to make them available. Whether they work or not is a whole different situation. So the bottom line is, your overlay district doesn't work, nothing's been done to change that, and we're almost four years later.
And what about smaller antennas?
They don't, they don't...
Better inside flagpoles, or that kind of thing?
We could do that if we had sites that were accommodated. This site will not accommodate an internally mounted antenna, so we'd have to go up higher, because as was provided in previous testimony, AT&T will need two slots within those flagpoles, within those, all they are, they just move the antennas inside, but they still need the same antennas, so they stack them rather than do them horizontally. So they'd have to take two slots, you would be bumping up the pole even higher.
Mr. Tucker?
Steven Tuckley, three ninety-seven, Tilden Road. In two thousand and nine, as I understand it, the town received a letter identifying five town-owned sites, and Nile Terrace was, or Nile Terrace, actually, it's not Nile, it's Nile Terrace, is one of them, it's a paper road, and part of the reason, I, I, we seem to have lost sight of Nile Terrace, I think Mr. Serke's going to say something about that, but we didn't pull that out of thin air. In two thousand, if you look at the, the minutes of this board, for October two thousand and ten, Mr. Parry said, in response to a question from Mr. Moran, and Mr. Moran asked all the remaining town-owned sites I mentioned, something off woodland, which is actually misrecorded, is Woodward, I guess it's something off woodland, and Mr. Parry at that point said, "We can make any of those five sites work, if they're not available." And so we didn't pull Nile Terrace out of the air, it was something that, we thought we had a lead, and we were trying to be, to be helpful. If it was a site that could work in, in two thousand and ten, we assumed that that was, continued to be the, the condition. And it seemed to me that the town's consultant, last time, Mr. Ustrow, is his name, Mr. Parry, and so did I, that seemed to me that he showed that that Nile Terrace site at a hundred and eighty feet would provide substantial improvement in the coverage, not necessarily equivalent to Tilden Road, but substantial improvement. And it's not clear to me that it is this board's job to provide something that is equivalent to Tilden Board, to Tilden Road. It's your job to, to help them provide substantial improvement, so I would ask you to, to consider that in your deliberations. Moreover, in two thousand and ten, we did some, some polling, now, this was not scientific, I say that absolutely clearly, it was not scientific, it was a huge email list, and we just sent around a poll about these five sites that AT&T said they were interested in, and that Mr. Parry had said would work, and Nile Terrace is the one that was identified by this absolutely unscientific sample, but it was the one that came out by far on top as a preference. And we worded the polling, by the way, I think I sent all this to you, you probably got it, I don't think the others of you would have gotten it, because you weren't on the board that time, at least I remember you being there. We worded so that things were either, the sites were unacceptable or acceptable and then preferred, and you ought to know that the Wampertuck School was the one that received absolutely the highest number of unacceptables. And the point that I made back then, and was very puzzled as to why there was a charge to the Wampertuck School, because it didn't seem to be wise then, and had I been a parent with a child at Wampertuck School, I would have been objecting for many of the same reasons that I think you're aware, the parents will be objecting. So Nile Terrace didn't come out of the blue, we were following the lead, we thought, of AT&T, and also the reports that showed that it did provide substantial improvement at a hundred and eighty feet, not two hundred feet. Those twenty-nine sites, those weren't sites that AT&T initially asked about, as I understand it, they were all sites that were identified in discussions among, in the board, plus their site identifier, who then contacted private parties when the town, when Mr. Doug sent this letter saying that those five sites were outside the overlay district, and therefore not available for the purpose AT&T proposed. So just, you know, to focus attention, given Nile Terrace is plausible alternative, done in goodwill, and also, it happens to be in the street, because it doesn't have any houses in such a street, and it's not nearly as intrusive, there aren't houses in nearly as close proximity, yes, there are weapons, that may cause some, create havoc. That's, that's my piece.
Ray Serke.
You, would you like to make your presentation?
Thank you very much. For the record, again, my name is Richard Serke, I'm an attorney in Plymouth, and I represent a number of persons in the room here tonight. My presentation, as was foreshadowed by your last meeting, is going to focus on the Nile Terrace site. The area outlined in blue on the composite assessors' maps to my right, surrounded by the vacant land that's outlined in yellow. Thank you, sir. Now, this site has been described as not available. However, on July twenty-sixth, I delivered a letter to the Board of Selectmen that reads as follows. It's addressed to Kim Donovan at the Board of Selectmen's office, and I've given a copy to Nicole. Pursuant to our conversation on July twenty-five, I enclosed petitions to Situate Board of Selectmen consisting of several pages. As the petition states, it requests that the article set forth therein be inserted in the warrant for the next special town meeting, but does not request that a special town meeting be called for that purpose. I assume, therefore, that when the board opens the warrant for the next special town meeting, this article will be included therein. And the petition, signed by over a hundred and seventy registered voters of the town, requests that the following article be inserted in the warrant, to see if the town will vote to sell or lease all or a portion of the town-owned land identified as the Nile Terrace site, for the purpose of constructing and maintaining a wireless communication facility, or take any other action relative thereto. Now, in response to the petition that was filed, and the minimum number of signatures that are required under the statutes of the hundred, so, we have well in excess of the number, I received the following email from Ms. Donovan at the Selectmen's office. This email will serve as confirmation that the town of Situate's office of the Board of Selectmen will contact you and Mr. Tucker when a date for a fall twenty thirteen special town meeting has been set by the Board of Selectmen. In addition, you will be advised of the date when the Board of Selectmen will open and close the special town meeting warrant. It is our understanding that you wish to submit a citizen petition for inclusion in the said special town meeting warrant. The citizen petition that was dropped off in the Selectmen's office two weeks ago was picked up by Mr. Tucker today, August sixth, twenty thirteen. Also, the town administrator has confirmed that the petition format that your client used is acceptable as is. In other words, it was not necessary to use the town's petition form. And that is the end of the email. So there is an article that will be included in the warrant for the special town meeting that will occur, as I understand it, in September or October or November, and that article will seek to authorize the Selectmen to issue an RFP for the Nile Terrace site. Now, I've also submitted a letter from a civil engineer from Plymouth, whose name is William R. Shaw, and it writes as follows. Dear Board members, I have been asked to visit the Tilden Road site by attorney Richard Serke in order to determine if the potential alternate site on Nile Terrace had any advantage or disadvantage concerning site construction. I made that visit on August fourth, twenty thirteen, and offered the following. One, the Tilden Road site is closer to the surrounding neighborhoods. Two, the Nile Terrace site is heavily vegetated, and would potentially better stream the construction activity and the structure. Three, the Nile Terrace site would require conservation fibers. Four, a thorough analysis of the Nile Terrace site should be done before proceeding to Tilden Road, mainly to minimize the impacts on the surrounding neighborhoods. Now, as has been established by several persons at tonight's hearing and previous hearings, you know that the Nile Terrace site is far more isolated than the small site on Tilden Road. It contains fifteen acres, and it's surrounded by a substantial amount of vacant land. It is town-owned, as you know, and that's so very important, because it's in the public interest that the revenue come to the town, rather than endure to the benefit of a private landowner. And the Telecommunications Act contains preferences for using publicly-owned property for purposes of towers, for that very reason. for purposes of towers, for that very reason. As Mr. Tucker stated in the two thousand and nine letter from Mr. Parry, he wrote that "We understand that AT&amp;T has contacted the town in the past with respect to one or more of the number of listed sites, but as part of AT&amp;T's due diligence in obtaining and committing to further sites, we're writing to respectfully request that the town consider issuing a request for proposals for one or more of the following properties, and one of them is the Nile Terrace site." And as Mr. Tucker stated, in two thousand and ten, the minutes of the board's hearing on October four indicated that Mr. Parry stated, and I quote, "The other four municipal sites all were," quote-unquote. Now, obviously, because of the size of this Nile Terrace site, it's very unlikely that a side yard setback variance is going to be needed, which is obviously one of the variances that has been applied for and is needed for the Tilden Road site. As you know, from your own consultant at IDK Communications, when you compare figure eight of his maps, which focuses on the existing AT&amp;T cellular coverage with Nile Terrace at a hundred and seventy-seven feet, and you compare that with figure seventeen, with the existing AT&amp;T cellular coverage with proposed Tilden Road at a hundred and seventeen feet and Situate Fire Department at a hundred and ten feet, the Nile Terrace site, although it does not replicate the amount of coverage that the Tilden Road site would, it comes substantially close to it. And it has the benefit of impacting fewer neighbors and requiring fewer variances. The town has an overlay district, and there's been a representation made that the overlay district is not adequate for purposes of locating a tower that would fill the alleged gap. But has AT&amp;T considered the possibility that it could obtain from the planning board a waiver of the one hundred and eighty feet height limitation in the overlay district? I haven't, I haven't heard whether or not a taller tower in the overlay district would or would not remedy the situation we've been talking about. And the reason I say that is because Section 540.7 of the zoning bylaw provides that, at the discretion of the planning board, a greater height may be committed in the overlay district, upon a demonstration that additional height is necessary for the provision of wireless communications. Why shouldn't AT&amp;T be required to first persuade the planning board to allow it to build a taller tower in the overlay district before asking the zoning board for variances to allow it to build a tower outside of the overlay district? The variances that are being sought are not only the side yard setback, but a use variance. And a use variance, as you know, is something you're powerless to grant, except in the case of a tower, because of the Federal Telecommunications Act. But if we went to the overlay district, there'd be no need for a use variance. Nile Terrace would require a use variance, but it wouldn't require a setback variance. Now, are there weapons at the Nile Terrace site? Certainly. But you file a notice of intent, then you get an order of conditions. And if you're required to replicate weapons, then you do so. But creative engineering on the Nile Terrace site, it seems to me, is a possibility that has not yet been sufficiently explored. So, if AT&amp;T, and I commend them, is willing to extend the deadline in order to wait for Wampatuck, why not wait for Nile Terrace? Because we'll know before this calendar year is out whether the town meeting has authorized the Board of Selectmen to issue an RFP for Nile Terrace. And at that point, if they do, then instead of reapplying for permission from this board to build at Wampatuck School, they could have reapply to this board for permission to build at Nile Terrace. And it's not a question of imposing the same burden on another neighborhood that might not be here tonight. It's a far more isolated site. It's a larger site. It's a logical site. It's right next to the rail line. And I urge you to consider that, not because it's before you, I know it's not before you. But one of the burdens that any applicant under the PCA has is to satisfy you that there are no feasible alternatives. So I know tonight Nile Terrace is not available. Tonight, Wampatuck School is not available. But both of those situations may change very quickly. And I urge you to consider the Nile Terrace site for all the reasons that I, that I've just cited. If the Telecommunications Act can trump zoning requirements when it comes to side yard setbacks and use variances, I'm sure that having to apply for an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission will be no legal impediment. Remember, a use variance of the type and the setback variance of the type you're being asked to give are extreme forms of relief, especially in a road that has historic properties and a road that's a scenic road. So, I urge you to consider all of that when you decide to close this hearing and when you ultimately deliberate. Consider the alternatives, and that's a very good one.
Attorney Serke said, you, did you explore a higher tower? Would that help anywhere?
We explored, if you take a look at Town Five, our set acquisition, based the state of the, based on the city area and how the city is owned, there are no parcels located in the wireless communication, overlay district. Sorry, there are no, I'll do it now.
Okay.
There are no parcels located in the wireless overlay district upon which AT&amp;T could construct the facility and fill its existing gap in coverage. The difficulty is, anything outside the overlay district, the same board has no jurisdiction over, that's why we're before this board. Otherwise, we should rightfully be the people of the planning board.
Right.
We, the overlay district is so limited, I think we've shown each time in each application that it's not functional. And I'll refer you to his statement in Section sixteen, that hasn't been raised by any of the consultants. I think it's a given that your overlay district doesn't work. And that was offered, and I think we've carried that for him. The, you know, I completely understand the issue with Nile's terrace, Nile Terrace. The difficulty is, not only is it not available, but AT&amp;T's testimony is that it doesn't work through the network. So we can talk about other people's properties, but until it's put into play, we don't know that we can consider it. So we know Wampatuck works. It doesn't work as well, but we know it gets close. AT&amp;T is more than happy to use Wampatuck. AT&amp;T is also more than happy to use Tilden. So the question becomes, we can ask about all of the properties, but AT&amp;T doesn't have an interest in buildings at Nile Terrace, because for the reasons Dan said, it doesn't fit into the network. So, will it provide some coverage? Yes. Is it acceptable to AT&amp;T? No. That might not be what everybody wants to hear, but those are the facts. With respect to the wetlands, I don't know, nobody knows. It would take an order of conditions, I assume, to bring a road in or to find a location on which to build it. But we're not even there yet. We know where Wampatuck can build because we looked at it. We filed it previously. You had an application before you pulled Wampatuck. So Wampatuck is a replacement that's acceptable to AT&amp;T's network. It'll fill the gaps, and AT&amp;T is satisfied that they can construct the site at Wampatuck if it becomes available. So, that's what we offer. If it becomes available, it works for us. If Nile's, if the Board of Selectmen asks AT&amp;T if Nile's terr, Nile Terrace were available, does that work? Our test, our response would be no.
Is, is that what the town's consultant concluded? Because the town's consultant, I don't believe, indicated that Nile Terrace would not be adequate. He indicated that it would not be equivalent to Tilden Road, but he indicated, if you look at the exhibits that I cited you to, that it would substantially address the problem. And I think by citing Wampatuck as the only alternative, I think that AT&amp;T is setting up somewhat of a straw man, because it knows that there's a substantial amount of opposition in the town to Wampatuck School. And so, if the effort is being made to give an opportunity to the public to cite the tower at a, at a site that it knows the Selectmen are not going to be able to approve, and then come back and say we tried, I don't think that cuts it. I think you have another site that may be available very soon, and I don't believe that that's been investigated at all to determine whether or not the topography or the location can, can address, maybe not in every respect, but in a substantial respect, the, the, the coverage issues. I did not hear the town's consultant state that Nile Terrace was completely inadequate. What I heard was that it's not as financially perhaps as equivalent to AT&amp;T as Tilden Road is.
Well, let me, let me clarify, because that's not what your consultant said. I'm going to read what your consultant said, not someone else looking at the figures and looking at the coverage box. You look at, in the numbered pages where it says figure eight, ID, and I quote, "IDK ran a coverage analysis to determine the impact of coverage by adding an alternative site at the Nile Terrace property at a height of a hundred and seventy-seven feet period." This site has been, you know, with coverage limitations, Tilden, southeast. So, he didn't say it provides almost all of it. He said it has limitations. Our engineer, who is responsible for, for designing the network, says it's not sufficient. So, that's our evidence that we've proposed. I think it's consistent with what Mr. Hudson said previously, and what was Pogajic said most recently, that it doesn't provide the same coverage that Tilden does. So why would we use it? It wouldn't make any sense. And I would like to address the straw man issue, because if we wanted this over, we would just continue on our path. We would ask the board to render this decision by October fifteenth, and Wampatuck is of no consequence, because it's not available. So the idea that we're setting up Wampatuck, but we don't really want it, is just flat retort. We would just end in here, take Tilden, or be denied on Tilden, and then do what AT&amp;T needs to do. But the, the idea that we're setting Wampatuck to fail makes no sense. It's not a good strategy, and it makes no sense, it would just be the lane we have to go. We would use Wampatuck if we became available. Your good.
All right. Anything else we're going to remember?
I've got a couple of questions. One, one for each of you, so who wants to go first?
You bet.
Looking at, at the maps, this is, this is my concern. I think it's pretty obvious here that because Nile Terrace is further to the south, that you lose coverage to the north, and that you increase a lot of redundant coverage from the existing tower. Do you agree or disagree with that?
I agree with that.
Okay, I thought you were. So, the concern that, I guess I would have, is if we go with that, then aren't we looking at the possibility of AT&amp;T or Verizon or somebody wanting to put in another tower up further north? And so, if we're really interested in minimizing the number of towers that are going up along the coast, wouldn't it make more sense to, to get whichever one, Wampatuck, you know, or the one that we're considering here, which has more coverage to the north?
Well, let me turn that question around. You heard it asked rhetorically tonight, whether it makes sense to locate a tower on private property in a fairly dense neighborhood and thereby create a precedent for doing it again when the next tower is used. To use Nile Terrace, you avoid that precedent. And beyond that, the technology is changing so quickly that even if the tower at Nile Terrace doesn't create the same amount of coverage along the coast and causes some redundancy to the south, it's, it's, it's some improvement, and when that proves to be inadequate, perhaps there'll be the possibility of a number of the other technologies that were discussed at the previous hearing becoming available, or putting them in flagpoles or whatever. But I'd be concerned about putting the tower on Tilden Road and thereby creating a precedent for the next time somebody wants to put a tower on private property in a fairly dense neighborhood that the precedent is already been set.
Look, there is no precedent, because this is all governed by federal law. So what do you do for a private site or a public site? We have community service standards. The board has to consider our evidence, and if they determine that we have not proved our case under the Telecommunications Act because we don't have the authority to grant the use variance under state law, then that's our burden, but it doesn't create any precedent. Any power, any FCC licensed carrier can come in and choose a location and need their burden. So, it has no precedent whether it's public land, private land. The bottom line is, if a carrier is prohibited or other bylaw or zoning decisions have the effect of prohibiting adequate coverage, then the courts are going to overturn those decisions, as we tell time and time again. So there is no precedent. The precedent has already been set by Congress. You can't stand in the way of the site. We have a burden to be, and I would say, from everything we've submitted, while the burden's heavy, we've more than that burden.
So, I, I agree with you, unfortunately, and I think this answers some of the citizens' questions, that, that the zoning board of appeals of Situate really is constrained by enactively applying the law of the federal government, not, not the town's law, here with, with respect to the decision that we have to make. We're, so we are constrained that way. But one of the things that we do have to decide is whether there are available alternatives. And that's why we, we've been having this discussion. And I'm not sure you, you answered the question, or maybe I didn't hear it correctly, is if we looked at one of the towers that is in the overlay district and, and bumped up the height, would we get additional coverage?
The towers that are in the overlay district, the towers that are in the overlay district, the existing towers, the three specific pieces surrounding, I have the plot, existing coverage. AT&amp;T is co-located on one of them at a hundred and ninety-eight feet. Okay, so I don't know how much you want on it. Typically, don't extend, and, and it is not AT&amp;T's tower.
Which tower is that?
That is the guy tower on one seventy-eight feet west.
Okay.
That's AT&amp;T's co-located on that. The other tower they're co-located on is twelve, is two eighty Driftway, it's a hundred and eighty foot. That's their height.
That the dump?
Could be somebody else's.
Twelve sixty-six.
But that's the center one that they already have, a hundred and eighty feet. And then, the third one is at, is a lattice tower at six oh four, six hundred to six oh four Chief Justice Highway. And they're, they're co-located on that tower at a hundred and forty-eight feet.
How much?
The question is.
One forty-eight.
The question is, if we increase the height of those towers.
And I guess my, my, the only response I have is, how much do you think you can, you can only increase, for example, that one is the lattice tower. You can only increase it a certain amount. And even if you increased that, I'd have to do the analysis, but my guess is because of how far away it is, which if you look at, if you have any of the previous reports, the very first plot, the seven nine, eighteen, two thousand and ten report shows the network. And these sites are over a mile away from the target area. Whoa. Whoa. 51 feet. You think about an angle, so I've got an angle and a mile away, and this is 150 feet. And this is 200. How much did I change? You know what I mean? If you draw a line from where the users are, where the gap is, to the height of the tower, well, that's 150 feet, a mile away, I would have to run it. I'm not going to give you the answer, but I guarantee you that that is not kind of nearly close.
Let me just ask you this. Is this something that, you're obviously an expert on this, but is this something that we could get rather than a guess?
No, I can run it. I can run for it. And if you want it, we will provide it.
I think, I knew you would say that. But I think it's a fair question. And you can put in a contrary, you know, if you have an expert that's going to dispute that, that's fine.
That's where the town's zoning bylaw for the town meeting has indicated they should be. And the planning board has the authority to grant waivers. They wouldn't have to come here. They'd have the ability to get a waiver from the planning board. So it seems to me that before asking the zoning board for a use warrant, they should be able to demonstrate that a higher tower with a waiver from the planning board is not an option. We're quite confident we can address that.
Okay.
Is there a limit on the height? I mean, before you start to interfere with small aircraft?
Absolutely.
What is that?
Plus, you, these towers, you notice all of these towers are 200 feet.
Right.
They're only 200 feet from reason. Typically, when you go over 200 feet, you have to flash the red lights on. You don't like to flash the red lights. So now, so the tower to the south is 198 feet. It's probably 199.
That's 1266. 1266, that tower, or the dump. MA 1266.
That one is 100. Well, AT&amp;T is on that one at 180 feet. So I don't know how tall the tower is. I don't know if AT&amp;T has top. I have to look at that.
Just when you're referring to the towers, we have the map in front of us with the tower numbers.
Okay. 1266, AT&amp;T is at 180. So that tells me that tower is at least 180 feet. 1325, they're at 198.
That's not. That's Adam Marshall, I think.
Yeah.
And for crowd 1266, he's referring to the site at the transfer station.
And 1204.
Which is the high school.
Is the high school. Is, AT&amp;T is at 148, and there are whips. I would say feet as you whip on that tower higher up. So you have some police fire or AT&amp;T's or whatever, and also co-located on that tower. And then the tower to the north of that, 1215, is, AT&amp;T is co-located at 171 feet. So that's probably at least 180 foot tower. But yes, you're suggesting that you want us to run, say, 1215 and 1266 higher than 180 feet? So over 200 feet? Why not? Why, it depends on the simple reason that they would all have to be lit. And they're not our towers. AT&amp;T doesn't own the towers. So they would have to go to whoever owns those towers. And structurally, they would have to be increased in height. And then on top of that.
Okay. But let's cross the first bridge. And the first bridge is whether technically it would make a difference. Because if it doesn't, then we don't even have to get into that.
I'll run a theoretical analysis that I need from the board. I mean, do you want me to do unlimited view or go by?
If you can do it, if you can tell us how high, let me put it to you this way. I mean, you know, I'm a lawyer, so we like to push things to the extreme. Tell us how high we'd have to go to satisfy the coverage area. And if you tell me it's a half a mile up, you know, I'm going to say, well, that's probably a little unreasonable to ask you to build a tower that high. You know what I'm saying? Okay. But since you're still on the floor, I have one more question that we talked about the last time. I know you've looked at the populations. Is there any way that you can tell me the difference either in terms of numbers or percentages of the coverage that you're getting from Nile Terrace, Tilden Road, and Wampanoag? So that we can compare and see how many people you get and how many people you lose. So the big discussion here is, okay, now Terrace is much further south. It doesn't provide as much coverage north and in some other area, a couple of other areas. How many people is that? I mean, I can visualize it by looking at your room in orange, but.
I see.
Yeah. How many people is it?
I'd have to run, that's a separate, that's a separate analysis. As I mentioned, the numbers that I have here from POPs are going to be, it doesn't tell you where those POPs are.
Explain what a POP is again.
It's percent of population.
Okay.
It's a census term. So we buy data, we get data from the government. And so we have 2000, and we have 2010, what they call POP data. And what it does is it takes a small pin in a given, we're going to give it a zip code, and it will tell you based on the census, how many people are in that new pin. And the pin size might be 200 feet or by 200 feet. They will take a little section of town, and then they will give you these, these poly bars, and they're always the same shape, not so as. We'll get your answer.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
John?
Sir.
Anthony?
Just in looking at the overlay district and increasing the height of the tower, there's a line in the IDK report that refers to monopoles being limited at a certain height? Is that, so we're talking about a guide tower?
Yeah. If you go typically, if you're going to get a monopole and go up to 200 feet, then very, very heavy, you go with a monopole, so you've got to figure the diameter of that monopole. 200 feet. You're talking something pretty size.
Right. At what height are we not talking about?
I asked this question before, and I think the answer I got back was not too much over 200.
So for all intents and purposes, when we're talking about going up in the old overlay district, and I'd like to know if you agree as well, it sounds like we're talking about going up well above 200 feet.
I don't know. And you don't extend a monopole.
The only thing, you know, a monopole is designed at the time, the foundation's poured and.
Of course.
You can't extend off that, exactly.
I mean, I'm sure of what minor amounts, but you cannot double the size of it because it's designed not to fail engineering-wise at that given height. Lattice towers are easier to modify. Guide towers are the easiest because they just stand there and you just increase the number of guide wires so you don't get the contamination. But monopoles, a monopole that was not designed to be at the height, that'd be replaced. So you would have to go in, take it down for the due of its place that would be designed at a certain height. Lattice towers, to some extent, may be modified, but there will be structural limitations. We don't have the answer, so we can play this, we can do the show.
So you're going to find out the height and what the height would mean to the.
I'm quite confident if I come back and say 500 feet, that I'm happy saying that that is unreasonable, and we move on. I think 300 feet might be unreasonable, but I don't know what the answer is. We will get the answer.
For example, 1266, at a height which is 180 feet now, that's a monopole. You can't, unless it was designed, when they did, designed the foundation and the footing, unless they designed it to go 200 feet, you can't add on to that.
I understand.
Does that, do you still want me to run it higher, even though it can't?
I think it would help everybody to understand how high you have to go up in order to get the coverage.
And then just in the Nile Terrace situation here, I mean, I think we can all acknowledge it's a less populated area.
Yes.
But we're also, please correct me if I'm wrong, I think at a minimum, we're talking about 177 feet. So we're talking about a good deal higher than the Tilden Road tower. There is still someone who's going to be against that site, right?
But far fewer, and much farther away.
Absolutely.
And I'm not concerned without further information about the proximity to nearby wetlands. I mean, that's something that creative engineering can always surmount. And if in fact the TCA can trump zoning, it certainly can trump the Hatch Act and the local wetland laws. So I sense, I sense there's a certain reluctance, and you'll have to determine this on your own, but ask yourself whether there's a certain reluctance to explore higher towers in the overlay district, and whether there's a certain reluctance to explore fully this site. And if you feel that there's that reluctance, then demand that those alternatives be satisfied to your satisfaction before going.
And if they were available, I'd say it's fair game. Well, but just like you can't hold us accountable for Wampanoag and say, well, you know what? There's a nice site over Wampanoag that you can have and use that instead because it's not available. As is Nile Terrace isn't available. So it's not something that I can sit here tonight and say, this is a viable alternative. Wampanoag gets it.
You know, and you make a good point, though. Are you going to be at the selectman's hearing when they address Wampanoag?
No.
Because I, why aren't we, why aren't you asking the selectman to consider whether they offer an RFP for Nile Terrace, too? I mean, why do we have to wait?
They have to get authority from town meeting.
If they're not even going to ask for it, just as with Wampanoag, why, aren't we spinning our wheels? Don't we need a selectman behind us?
Well, I'm hoping that if the town meeting votes to authorize the selectman to act on Nile Terrace, that they'll smell, you know, they'll get which way the wind is going.
Well, and I guess I'm turning your argument on you with, and, you know, you argued, well, if they'll wait for Wampanoag, why won't they wait for Nile Terrace? But my argument to you is, why don't you go to the selectman and ask them if they've got any interest in that?
I may add further information. May I?
Dr. Luke Kerr.
Yes, go ahead.
Steven, talking to 97, Tilden Road, I fact did go to the selectman's meeting and ask that question. And the stall that asked me the question was completely out of order because there's no open here and here. So I think that's.
No, I, well, I think the selectman would like, you know, it should be added to the agenda as AT&amp;T has asked the selectman for Wampanoag.
I did ask if we could put it on the agenda, and they told me it's out. Any discussion of this was completely out of order because there's no open here and here. And they couldn't do it. And the person, the person who's the lawyer on the committee told me, and former chair of this, told me that it's absolutely out of order because he's the former chair of this committee, and he's a lawyer as well, so who knows what they're talking about? I said, okay.
Now we know who you're talking about.
And you can watch it on YouTube or whatever, whatever those things are broadcast.
Well, quick to the ground, they went, they.
It was a town meeting with authorized Wampanoag.
Yeah.
And the town voted to make it available, and then the selectman said, no.
I'm not so sure that that's what happened.
I was at the town meeting. Am I, what was I, what, did I miss the vote?
I don't know.
The town vote wasn't announced.
Yeah.
For Wampanoag.
Yeah.
Maybe the selectmen don't have to send it back.
Well, that's a, yeah, that's a very good question. I mean, I'd, it's been a while. Do you remember that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Am I correct?
Yes.
I always liked that. Yeah.
Say who I am again.
Every time. Oh, she says no. Okay.
That town meeting, I remember vividly, there was absolutely no discussion other than what the advisory committee gave to the town in that booklet that they provide. And it was all about the financial benefits to the town. What people were voting on were they wanted the town to derive a financial benefit from the town. That's what they were voting on. I don't think they were thinking whether it was Wampanoag or Nile Terrace or anyplace. They wanted the town to derive the financial benefit. That was my reading of the situation. There was no discussion.
But it wasn't that discussion wasn't available.
Nobody stood up.
Right. Exactly.
I remember it.
Yeah.
In fact, I was rather surprised it went through so nicely.
So was I.
You know?
I tried to comment some dissent.
But then, you know, then recently, the selectman, so I don't know. Maybe, I'm not sure. I don't know how long that's good for. I don't, I don't, yeah. It's a good one for you.
Hi, I'm Robyn Blaser, 26th Assistant Drive. I was at that meeting, and the disconnect at that meeting was they identified Tilden Road at that time, the, I'm sorry, they identified Wampanoag at that meeting based only on its address. And people didn't, there were so many people after the fact who thought you were talking about the proving grounds. They didn't identify that it was Wampanoag Elementary School at that particular town meeting. So after the fact, when the school then became aware of it and all these parents were just so upset, they all thought that that address, because to be honest with you, we don't know the address of, we just know where our kid's school is. We don't write to it, so we don't take note of the address. So they, there were many, many, many people who assumed it was the proving grounds and didn't know that the address they were talking about on Tilden was actually Wampanoag School. So that all came to light after the town meeting.
That isn't my memory. My memory was at the.
Wampanoag School, we're right out there.
Not at that first one.
Yeah. I could be wrong. But it sort of like doesn't matter.
Well, it doesn't because the bottom line is we need to have a willing landlord.
Yes, we do.
Willing property owner willing to enter into a agreement with us. And whether, if they're not going to do that notwithstanding whatever improvements they may or may not have, that's not the way we do business. We want someone that's willing to enter into a decent agreement. And if the selectmen are not willing to do that, it's not available.
Okay. Well, we've been at it now for over two hours. And if there's, if anybody has anything new to add or ask, this would be the time.
3B, Dr. Duff, 351 Tilden Road. Just have a question of the board. Who determines wetlands?
Conservation commission, I suppose.
Conservation.
It's a scientific determination. They have to.
You can go right on the conservation, go right on the map.
My question being, can wetlands become drylands?
Well, they can be drained, I assume, but I don't know. It's, well, we have done, we've dealt with it.
So give me back the paper.
Yeah. But you can, you know, people can cut stuff down, and then they can certainly be altered naturally, but they, and they can be altered unnaturally, which is what's illegal.
Okay. I guess my question and my comment is, having lived in this property, all my family having lived there for 52 years, the designated site, what cell tower on Tilden Road, we used to skate on.
Yes.
Okay. So I don't determine, understand why water that once existed there would be somewhat what I would consider wetlands. Moving forward 22 years later, after my wife and I were married, we applied for a building permit to put a garage on our house. And we were denied, not denied, let me restate, we were told because of the wetlands that surrounded our property, we would have to go in front of a board, hire a lawyer, and the expense to do that, we could not absorb at that time. So I don't understand why they have just disappeared. That's my first comment. My second comment is regarding Situate, our lovely community here. We know that weather anomalies exist here. In fact, we are on the national news all the time. And I can't imagine a board would consider a cell tower that could possibly fall on anyone's house. And next to the Tuckers, my house is the closest one to that tower. In fact, our homes are closer than the Smalls' house. That's scary to me. Okay? And my third comment is, is a question directly to AT&amp;T. You currently have a cell tower at Highland Crossing, is that correct?
Yes.
In Highland. In Highland Crossing?
MA 1215, or 2115?
I have a picture of it.
I don't think anyone's discussed the cell tower.
I think they're trying to figure out whether they own it or not.
Okay, my question being, if we confirm indeed that they do have that, there are signs on that fence surrounding that, and I'd like to read. On this tower, radio frequency fields near some antennas may exceed FCC rules for human exposure. Now, I know that they have addressed time and time again that there is no detrimental effect to humans around cell towers. And I don't think anyone in this room would argue the fact that we all use cell phones, and I have mine in my pocket, okay? And I get frustrated, too, that my calls are dropped all the time here in Situate. But my question is, if they put these on the fence surrounding that, and it is so close to so many properties, why would the board even ever consider that? When you have an alternative site that is far, far exceeding as far as closeness to properties? Thank you.
Shall we talk about the next meeting?
Continue.
Um, well, you, you have, you have a date next weekend with the, um.
We hope to.
With the selectmen, correct?
We hope to.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question? Can AT&amp;T respond to the design as on?
Sure. Designs are posted at every.
Reason that, with that sign is stating, that, that sign is put there for people climbing the tower. And when it says may be above FCC limits, it means above FCC limits as are set to the general population. General population is anyone that is not aware of our emissions. So, they don't know that there's something there that they have to be cautious of, but yet if I'm a rigor on a tower, and I climb up the tower, I have been trained in our emissions. So, that sign is a regulatory sign that is required to be put there to tell people climbing the tower, occupational workers, that once they get to a certain height, in close proximity to the antennas, they're above the general population. That's all that means.
And you have our MPE study, it's called, which indicates what the emissions would be at ground level, and we fully comply with FCC standards by multiple factors. So, there's, there's signage on each of those sites, because people are trained to be around the antennas, because you wouldn't want to be standing directly in front of it for a long period of time. But workers are trained to deal with that. We're talking about exposure to the general population. So, there's a sign posted at all of those locations, per the FCC requirements.
Okay. Okay. Nicole, have you got any information on meeting times, places?
I don't. I'm thinking, it sounds like we're gonna go far out, like October, or?
I think we're looking at September, because if we get a response next week, I just thought that maybe if we had, went past, there's not much to discuss, if we went past two selectmen meetings, which would be the 20th, I think they meet every couple of weeks.
No, every Tuesday.
Every, every?
No, every other Tuesday.
Oh, every other Tuesday? I thought it was every Tuesday.
I was thinking mid-September would get us two selectmen meetings. We may know after the first one, but at least, you know, if it continued for some reason.
They should meet on the 3rd if it's every other one. So, what are you looking at?
Do you know what the S90?
Uh, yeah, that's our, that's our scheduled regular.
It's our regular meeting.
But I mean, if you guys wanna pick a date, I don't, I'll do the legwork after the fact and find the location.
Are you jammed up on the 19th, or?
Um, I only have one application, but I can change.
Yeah.
It's up to the board, what they want.
We'll be available, we'll do it there.
Either that, or we have to do a separate meeting.
It seems to me that it really depends on what, what happens, and that's out of our control. It could be a very short meeting, in which case, we should probably just have it for the 19th. So, I'm comfortable leaving the decision as to whether, if something otherwise happens, we should probably have a separate meeting.
Right.
Leaving it to the chair to make that decision, and then, you know, everybody will need to check the town website to, to find out, um.
Well, we, you could do it for the 19th, and then if you need longer, just submit a letter, the board can vote that night to continue it to a different date, if need be. And I'll have the location.
Well, I was thinking even earlier.
Yeah, I was thinking earlier, too. Like, if it, if, if you get, if you get, you know, no support from the selectmen, it seems to me we should probably meet, like, on the 17th, because it's gonna be a longer meeting. Every time, it's at least a couple of hours.
Can you remind us of the timeframe for due date of the decision, if, assuming the selectmen are non-responsive to your letter, and we have to move forward with this decision?
Well, in fairness to this board, I brought an agreement with me tonight that, notwithstanding of the selectmen to do, that we would move your decision date up October 17th.
Okay.
To coincide with your meeting that night, so you could.
Great.
Render a decision in September, work on the written decision, and then sign it at your meeting, so that everybody would be in compliance, and would have to issue by October 17th. I think that's a fair, a fair approach.
So, we're voting at our next meeting, the selectmen don't?
Well, not necessarily. We could vote.
We're being asked.
Yeah.
We would, we would ask it to vote.
Yeah.
Because we would probably hold to the deadline. But you could squeeze in other, we could attend other meetings if that was necessary.
Right, you, you, you're agreeing to move the deadline to October 17th right now?
Yeah, notwithstanding what the selectmen.
Right.
Do, we would move to October 17th.
Okay, so if we, if we.
We'd have at least one more meeting before that.
Right. So, if we, if we tentatively put it for September 17th, but if the, if you're favorable result with the selectmen, we can have it on the 19th, if it's just a matter of continuing it. But if there's, needs to be a substantive meeting to make a decision, then we need to have it, I think, earlier, not tie it up with the other.
Well, then, I guess I would suggest scheduling it for the 17th. If something changes, we would notify you, and you have to post at the meeting location that it's been continued again to the 19th, and then we could come and take care of business that way.
Yeah.
But we won't know about Nile Terrace at that point.
Correct.
Because that'll be before the town meeting, the subsequent month, or the month after that, depending upon when the special town meeting is held, but it'll be on the warrant.
Okay.
And so, you, I think you need to consider whether that's a reasonable, whether, whether we can wait, given the shot clock. I'm not sure we can, but I'm open to legal advice on, or suggestions on that subject.
Yeah.
We'll make the inquiry with the selectmen.
Okay, that's, that, that would be good. All right, so, um, you have any little agreement?
So, we're gonna go on the 17th?
Right, so.
And I get continued for the 19th.
Right. Right. So, I guess we need a.
We'll vote on disagreement, we'll read it.
Yeah.
Just type it in.
Okay, so. Um, on behalf of AT&amp;T, and with respect to the above-referenced application, we respectfully submit this letter as our mutual agreement with the Situate Zoning Board of Appeals, the board, to extend the existing deadline for a written decision established by the FCC shot clock order from September 15th to October 17th, 2013. Additionally, this letter confirms AT&amp;T's agreement to extend the required date of the board's decision pursuant to state law to the same date. Okay. All right, so, um, we don't need to vote on this, right? We just need to accept it?
I think we do.
Do we need to vote on it?
We need to vote to continue it, definitely.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
We need to vote to accept the agreement with, with AT&amp;T.
We're wagering their vote.
Yes, well, I thought.
I don't think it's a voting issue, yeah.
I don't think it's a voting issue either.
It's better going to the great ones, since it's neutral.
Yeah. All right, well, I mean, well, first of all, let's, let's have a motion to continue the meeting to September 17th.
Motion to continue tonight's meeting, uh, with AT&amp;T to, um, September 17th.
Seventeenth, yes.
And location to be determined.
Determined.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And may opposed? No, okay. And, or we can vote on this, just to make it clean. Um, do I have a motion with respect to accepting the, um.
Motion.
Whatever. Agreement to.
Move that the Situate Zoning Board of Appeals approve the agreement with AT&amp;T set forth in the letter by Attorney Parry dated 8th, August 13th, 2013.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we signed it. You've got two of them.
And do we have a motion to hold this?
Um, any other business, attorney? Mr. Parry?
I'm sorry?
Any other business?
Uh, nothing.
Okay, okay. Do you have a motion to adjourn?